If you will stand, and Reverend Michael McCully will come and lead us in our invocation, and Commissioner Pickens will do our pledge.
Good morning, let us pray. Lord, as our leaders gather here today, I ask that you be in their midst. Make them instruments of your peace, give them the assurance of what would please you, and the wisdom to know what would benefit those who live in and work around Putnam County. I pray for the agenda set before these commissioners today, and I'm asking that you would graciously grant them, Lord, the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of the people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness. Grant them confidence in what is good and fitting, and the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Now, Lord, we also pray for Commissioner Stilwell, Lord, that you would give him a sense of your touch of peace and grace, special presence, and now I ask for your blessing upon this meeting today in your most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the first allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor McCully. Commissioners, before you, item number two, approval of our minutes of February fourteenth. The chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
So moved, okay.
Second.
All right, proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Item number three, proclamation, Putnam County and Putnam County Clerk of Court, Sunshine Week, open government. Commissioner Pickens, will you read the proclamation, please?
Thank you Chairman Harvey. Sunshine Week Open Government Proclamation. Whereas James Madison, the father of our federal constitution, wrote that consent of the governed requires that people be able to arm themselves with the power which knowledge gives them, and whereas every citizen in our participatory democracy has an inherent right to access the government meetings and public records, and whereas an open and accessible government is vital to establishing and maintaining the people's trust and confidence in their government, and in the government's ability to effectively serve its citizens, and whereas the protection of every person's right to access to public records and government meetings is a high priority of Putnam County and the Putnam County Clerk of Courts, and whereas the Putnam County and the Putnam County Clerk of Courts is committed to openness and transparency in all aspects of its operation, and seeks to set a standard in this regard. Now therefore, Putnam County and the Putnam County Clerk of Courts commits during this sunshine week and throughout the year to work diligently to enhance the public's access to government records and information, to increase information provided electronically and online, and to ensure that all meetings are delivered to bodies under its jurisdiction and their committees are fully noticed and open to the public. Done, ordered, and adopted this day, twenty-eighth day of February, two thousand seventeen.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens. Do I hear a motion to accept proclamation?
A move of approval or acceptance of the proclamation, two thousand seventeen dash eighteen.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible. We have a proper motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Proper second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. I would like, before we go to public comments, I see our sheriff has joined us today. Sheriff Deloche, thank you for being here. Former county commissioner Carl Flag is in the room, thank you for being here too, sir. Councilman Vick from Pomona Park is with us today, and we thank you for that. And Charles Overturf, our supervisor of elections, is in the audience today, and we thank you for that. Did I miss any elected officials or appointed? All right, well, thank you very much.
Commissioner Harvey?
Yes.
Could I make one comment?
You may, I was fixing to call on you, Mr. Downs.
I'm sorry.
That's fine.
To start with, Tim Smith, sorry he could not be here today, he's at a meeting in Orlando, the Clerk Association meeting where he has a leadership role, and it's very important for him to be there. But I think this is an important week for us to share with you that one of the critical duties for the clerk is to maintain the official county records. It's also very important that we secure those records and make them safe, but also have them for public access. So we're having a, an online demonstration on March the thirteenth at two o'clock, and at five o'clock, two different sessions, in the old board meeting room at one oh seven North Sixth Street. Two o'clock and five o'clock, and we'd love for anyone to come and follow the demonstrations and see how the transparency works online, and we look forward for each and every one of you to be here. Also, while I got the floor, let me tell you that on March the eleventh, from nine until two, in our recording office, we'll give people an opportunity to come and renew their passports. A lot of people work during the week and don't have time to renew their passports, and it's one of those things that slips up on you about the time you get ready to go somewhere, you say, "Oh, my gosh," and it's six weeks to get them. You know, I had to have an appointment, you come, first come, first served.
Thank you, Mr. Downs, we appreciate that so much.
Thank you.
And I'm sure the public will avail themselves of those opportunities. Okay, we will move into our public comment. You do not have to have a blue card in order to speak, but if you would, that would be very beneficial to us, and if you want to fill one out, give it to Tony, our clerk. Our first card, in no particular order, Wanda Ruckowitz. I want to go first. Somebody's got to lead it off, so come up. Commissioner, will you put three minutes on the clock? We are going to try to start with our three minutes, but if you go over a little bit, don't get too concerned.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Wanda Ruckowitz, I'm at one oh six Taylor Street, and on my card I put accountability. We teach our children to be accountable for their actions, because when you have an action, there's a reaction. So I feel that you guys sitting up here should be accountable for us, and try very hard not to put too much more on the taxpayers' dollars. We just can't do it anymore, and this county is really going downhill. We have people leaving by droves. Our schools are not up to par, and I'm an advocate for children, and it's not here, and we need to do something, and I understand, I was at the meeting with Congressman Yoho, okay? We're asking for billions of dollars for infrastructure here, but if the schools aren't here and the businesses are leaving, how are we going to do this? And we're asking for billions. So I'm asking you, all of you up there, to please help us come above. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wanda, thank you very much. Next speaker, Carolyn Swoup.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Carolyn Swoup, one thirty-seven Oak Crest, Interlaken. I'm going to mention an audit situation, subject that I myself put paperwork into the audit. First of all, three years ago, the sale of the landfill came up with the last Board of Com- County Commission meeting in February. Ultimately, the citizens of Putnam turned that down. However, Mr. Leary, our county administrator, hired David D. to write the landfill sale contracts, plus put out a request for proposal for companies to purchase the landfill in Republic One, all without Board of County Commission voting to see, to sell the landfill. Under state statutes, Florida Title XI, which is the Organization and Intergovernmental Relations County Administrator Powers and Duties, section, well, number one-two-five-dot-seven-four, section M, the county administrator has the responsibility to negotiate leases, contracts, and other agreements, including consultant services for the county subject to approval by the board, and make recommendations concerning the nature and location of county improvements. The board never voted to sell the landfill. This same verbiage is, has, was in the statutes dating back to two thousand and thirteen, that's all I researched it. So it's the same now as it was then. Mr. Leary hired David D. to write the landfill contracts, and I asked him during public comment how much this lease cost, he said seventy, excuse me, fifty-seven thousand dollars, but the actual total was ninety-two. That money came from the taxpayers, it's gone. You can take those contracts and make fancy wallpaper out of them if you want to, but this was money wasted. Since Mr. Leary acted on his own outside of state statutes, I respectfully ask Mr. Leary to return the wasted ninety-two thousand to the Putnam County Treasury. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carolyn. Before I call the next one, our Honorable Linda Myers has joined us in the audience. Thank you, Ms. Myers, for being here today. Faye Sparkman, you're on next.
Good morning, Faye Sparkman, one oh three Flamingo Boulevard, Interlaken, Florida. As to the audit, this is just the beginning. Everything has to be satisfied when you send the paperwork to the state, because you'll get another answer back. At the end of the audit, a lady named, what heck was her name, a state senator from Tallahassee, she lives in Jacksonville, Audrey Gifford, I believe was her name, said, "This county administrator has way, way, way too much authority." That was her last words. So I came up with the conclusion, the board of you are supposed to represent of all of us, so I would suggest that you ask your attorney to start putting out applications or whatever you do to hire a new county administrator, and also vote for Mr. Leary to have an okay to put in six months prior to get as far to retirement, because it has to have six months in there. That way it gives you time to get a new county administrator. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sparkman. Okay, Mr. Sparkman?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Merle Sparkman, one oh three Flamingo Boulevard, Interlaken, Florida. Mr. Chairman, we have some expensive equipment back there that when we have meetings here is not being utilized or used, and I wonder why we keep this equipment locked up such as what I'm wearing right now, so that I can hear whatever's going on? Because when you wear hearing aids and you've got the acoustics likes in this building, you don't hear anything. It's all noise, nothing. So why can't we have this out where people who are hearing impaired can make better use of it? It's, it's very expensive equipment, and it seems terrible to hide the candle underneath the basket, so if we could just make it a little easier for us people that are having problems hearing to have access, we'd appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sparkman, we'll take that.
Thank you.
We will look into that, thank you very much. Ray Roig, Sportsman Drive, Polacka. Please state your name and address, I forgot to get people to do that, our cards say that, but if you'll do that, please.
Yes, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Ray Roig, I'm at one eight-two Sportsman Drive in Polacka. Thank you for this opportunity, and I have to apologize to everybody here. Quite a few of you are aware of me, I've worked my way up the chain of command to get here, and this is a trivial thing about a parrot, but it's more important that it's not being enforced by our animal control and the code. So I've gone a little bit over, but I made a recording yesterday, and as I go over the code, I want everybody to know what I have to put up with eight hours a day, because the code enforcement people tell me that a noisy parrot isn't wrong. The code says nuisance means any animal conduct or behavior, but not limited to destruction, blah, blah, I'm not going to read the whole thing, but this causes a disturbance of the peace, and that's an O under animal code on section six. Then it goes on, on section six thirty-six is a noise ordinance, and a noise ordinance says it shall be unlawful for an owner, persons temporary custody, to have an animal or animals to allow the animal to bark, meow, whine, howl, or to make other sounds common to the species persistent or continuous. Webster says persistent is on a regular basis. The animal enforcement and everybody tells me that if the bird stops to take a breath after thirty minutes, it's not continuous. Somebody's interpreting the code to make, I don't want to work. It also goes on to say, for a period of thirty minutes or longer, well, I listened to this all day, eight in the morning till sunset at night. So it's, the law says, or the code, excuse me, that the animal is not contained within enclosed, enclosure sufficient to baffle the noise and render them reasonably unobjectable. And lastly, section six thirty-seven says, a habitual nuisance animal, which is unlawful for an owner or person having custody to permit the animal either willingly or through failure to exercise due care or control to commit a nuisance, and interfering with the reasonable use and enjoyment of the property, or by barking habitually, or by making other objectionable animal noises habitually, or by any other thing habitually which is so offensive as to create a nuisance. So habitual, according to the code, is, the purpose of this section means at least two separate occurrences within a time period of no more than a month. Well, this is a thousand occurrences a day. Like I say, I'm not going to point fingers, but I would sure like to see some action taken on code enforcement, or if we don't want to enforce this code like we do the other codes, I would ask that the board eliminate the animal control board if they're not going to do their job or follow the code. Thank you.
Mr. Roig?
Yes.
Have you contacted our department manager, Mr. Hammond, over here?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay.
I've worked my way up the chain of command to, from animal control, Lisa, to Mr. Hammond, to the county administrator. I spoke with Mr. Manning, the county attorney, I've spoken with Mr. Pickens, my representative in my district, and I'm just, I'm keeping going up because, as it says back there, on integrity, I will pursue this.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next card, Mr. Ed Kilabru. And that would be the end of our blue cards at that point.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My name is Ed Kilabru, one forty-six Bardin Estate Circle, Polacka, Florida. I just wanted to stand up here this morning and bring a little positivity into your meeting. I get tired of constantly hearing slamming of where I'm born and raised. This county and this town, all the municipalities in this county are beautiful places. I was in San Augustine this past weekend, everybody talks about going to San Augustine, and all I heard from residents and people over there along the streets was moving to Putnam County. They said that you all need to get, we've used up your surplus of homes, we've used up, we've bought up what we can buy up over there, but there's people wanting to move away from these bigger counties, these beautiful counties, as everybody else calls them, to our counties. And I just want to say that, you know, I want my county to be a place where my grandchildren, if they choose to go to school here and go to work here, that they can. I get tired of hearing how bad we are, how bad y'all are, how bad our government is, how bad everything else is. You know, we need to, that was the past. We don't live there no more, and you can giggle at me all you want to, but that's, that was the past. We need to move forward as a group of people now, a group of solidified citizens, to make our county better, to make our residents better, to make everything better. Yes, we got problems, but why do we have to drag them out, out on the, into the Channel Forty-seven news and all that every time we turn around? I'm just, you know, when you go downtown Polacka and you look at what's going on down there right now, I mean, the business is starting to come back. This is Saturday night, when I drove home from San Augustine, I stopped downtown Polacka, my wife and I had to ride around the block three times to find a parking place, three times. They had so much going on down there. So, you know, let's get going forward. I mean, that's, that's, I've heard that more from, from, from the commissioners than anything else, forward. Let's move forward, let's move strong forward. If we're sitting still, lean forward, don't go back to the back, don't keep dragging stuff up from the past, let's get going forward and let's change things around here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilabru, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, that's the end of our blue cards, is there anybody in the public that would like to come up and speak? I see Mary Kay, you've got your hand up first, or John Spell? Okay. Mary Kay, you had your hand up first, then Mr. Spell, then Mr. Hotelin, in that order, okay? And then Roxanne Weeks, so there's four, four on deck, and you know the order you're in.
Mary Kay Ingle King, post office box, Polacka, Florida. Been a home here for twenty-seven years and love it. I'm here to introduce to you again, very proud of, the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors, our BATH tournament that's coming up, guys. It's been fourteen years now, and it has evolved, and people are coming from out of state, and people are in-state coming to our tournament. We're working towards maybe two hundred anglers in this, so pass the word, and we're also going to have a lot of events for children. I think the Masons will be there, they can fingerprint your children for you, so there's a lot of things going. All right, let me just tell you some of the good things, too. Let me get the eyes on. All right, your five thousand dollar guarantee payback to first place, and that's why we get those anglers, because we pay big bucks, all right? All right, one thousand guarantee payback for big fish of the tournament, five hundred guarantee payback for second big fish of the tournament, eighty percent of payback to one in every seven boats, five fish limit waiver provide at check-in, and, and then we're going to have this two hundred and fifty dollar cash drawing, so we're going to be making some money there. I started this tournament back in oh four, when I was asked to be Chair of the Putnam Council, and I thought, you know, I want to do something that's going to give back to our community, and what is it? It's a BATH tournament. So we started the BATH tournament, I learned a lot about them, because I had to put it all together. I hired someone who would take care of our anglers, we had fifty-two votes, and they said, fifty-two votes, and they said, never before had they had a start of a BATH tournament with that many votes. So I was very proud of it. So this is my baby, but it's also a tournament with realtors. It's a realtor's tournament, we started it, and what we do, we're doing a fundraiser for hospice, and one thing that I did emphasize when I was Chair and started this, dollars stay in Putnam County. So the dollars we make, we give to hospice, but they stay in Putnam County. So come out, have a great time, it's going to be on Saturday, April twenty-ninth, and you have any questions, give me a call, nine seven two fifty-nine fifty-nine, because we do take contributions. It's a hundred and twenty dollars to sign up, so if you just want to go out with the kids and be part of it, whatever you want to do, it's a great day for everyone. And Putnam County is a great place to live, and we've got to stop with the negative and start thinking of the positive. And we can grow, we can change, but if, as long as we start pulling for that negative, we're not going to make any positive changes. So let's think positive, we think we can, what we can do to our county, what we can bring to our county, what jobs we can bring to our county. And people do want to move here, but we have a lot of things that are out there that says, no, not right now, but we can change that image. So like Ed was saying, let's, let's start looking positive for our county. I know there's a lot of things, the audit, et cetera, going on, let's just close that door, let's open a fresh door and start saying, come on, let's move to Putnam County as a realtor. You know, we've got places here, we have places on the river, just give us that chance. I didn't mean to get into that with this.
No, you're welcome. Thank you, Mary.
But listen, be happy, there's a thing that clinics charge you for health reasons, and one of the things they do, they ask you to just laugh. You don't have to have a purpose, you just start laughing, and you start laughing, and that releases your endorphins, and it makes it for a better, happier day. But listen, I laugh all the time anyway, if anybody knows that, but have a blessed day, and God love you, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Spell, I believe you're next.
Would you hand those to, hand those to our clerk, please? Okay.
John Spell, one oh six Citrus Lane. I'm here to speak under behalf of the covets that I had come across that was put in areas that there was being justified at the last meeting, in which the one on Cracker Swamp Dirt Road, now I've traveled through East Polacka quite often for the last over ten years, and I'm familiar with a lot of the fields and the roads and all of that, and there was one covert on Cracker Swamp Dirt Road, on the left coming off of the paved Cracker Swamp Dirt Road, there never was a covert there, but when I heard it was mentioned at the last meeting, you know, in a way of justification, in which for me, being in the area, the way I go around all the time, there never was a covert there. And on Turner and McCormick, now I was at the workshop meeting when Jacobus and Walt, you know, had a little words about, you know, every time he, Jacobus gets somewhere working, Walt would pull him off and do all of this here, but blah, blah, blah. But my thing is that covert on McCormick and Turner, now it was said that a semi had turned over in that ditch. Okay, I can understand that, if you've got guys coming in at night, ain't familiar with the area, they're going to have accidents, but you know, you cannot just go ripping the roads up and put a covert down and go twenty-five foot beyond the road and cover the ditch up to actually add extra covert to the ditch, but then at the same time you put a stop sign right at the edge of the road, but yet you got twenty-five foot of covert beyond that, so you know, you got to kind of use a little common sense to see whether it was justifiable to actually add that much more covert and a storm drain, you know, for a ditch on a back road. So you know, if y'all go by and just look, and you got to use a little common sense, and even when you're in these meetings and someone come up and tell you something, go out and look for yourself, because a lot of times, anybody can give you something to run with, but if you don't know what you're running with, then they got you under control. But if y'all just take your time and go and look for yourself and evaluate it, because right at the end of Cracker Swamp Dirt Road, there's a sharp curve, and that covert is actually collapsing, and if you go around that curve, about two hundred foot, there's another covert going underneath the road, it's got a hole in it, but what they did, they took a scrap piece of plastic pipe and stuck it up in it, and then put dirt wrap back over it. But where there's covets that needs to be replaced, they won't replace them. You got a covert on Walden Road, that last storm we had, it washed a great big hole in the road, but I'm looking at, they went and put dirt over it instead of pulling that covert out, because the next hard rain we get is going to wash it back out, and if, you know, you're traveling down there at night and don't know it, then you liable to have an accident. But like I say, you have to kind of pay attention to what you're being told, like I said, you ain't got to take my advice, just ride around and look for yourself, and Mr. Harvey, you know that one on that curve that didn't have no kind of indicator that you had that guy to come put out. Well, that one should have been replaced, but you know, you just go around certain areas and certain people are actually getting covert. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spell, we appreciate that. Okay, Mr. Tim Hotelin, and then Roxanne Weeks?
Tim Hotelin, one oh five Riverside Way, San Mateo. Just a real quick response to Ed Kilabru's comments. There's an old saying, if you don't remember history, you're condemned to repeat it, and at this juncture in Putnam County, facing the response for professionals that have spent a year and a half taking a look at things, I think we should in fact pay attention to what happened so that it does not happen again, and we can in fact move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hotelin. Ms. Roxanne Weeks?
Roxanne Reagan Weeks, Polacka, Florida. I want to address two issues that were spoken about at the audit meeting last week. The first one is the artwork that was in finding number two of the audit. Mr. Leary stated that the artwork was appraised by the artist at nine hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, but also adding the county never got their own appraisal. And this is ludicrous. This is not original artwork, it's reprints, and they're not, they're, just short and sweet, the county never even claimed an asset of this artwork. They have not shown that in their yearly reports, and it brings into question if this was some kind of tax write-off for the artist or whatever, because I witnessed that. or whatever, because I witnessed that recently in a land donation. So I will be following up with the IRS about that. The other issue is the culverts. Last Monday evening at the audit meeting, Mr. Tompkins came up here. He referred to the auditors as laypeople who did not understand DPW codes. For some reason, in the entire year that the auditors were here, he was unable to locate the covert installations. But then after the audit findings come out, he has it within a week. I made a public records request that evening and received it two days later. He provided me a list of addresses for the 19. For instance, the one that Mr. Spell's mentioned on East Cracker Swamp Dirt, his explanation is, is the covert was there, was inadvertently removed, and had to be reinstalled. As if there's just some imbecile county employee that commandeers huge equipment and goes around ripping up culverts by mistake. That's not even believable. And they installed the covert. It was caught into the story. There's several other instances. One, for instance, is stated to be added 10 foot to existing 24-inch cross covert. It is not a cross covert, it's a ditch covert. And it is not added to the existing. What it is, there's a brick house, they have a 24-inch covert, which was their original driveway. 40 feet later, they now have a second covert, giving them a U-shape turnaround in their yard, so they don't have to do it up in there. And you can see where the driveway was paved, or not paved, but dirt paved all the way up for them. This is just a couple of instances. You know, people talk about, well, let's move on, you know? The ridiculous things we were told the other night, we were flat-out lied to. We went to the state to begin with, because we came here over and over and over and couldn't get any resolution. So that's why we had to go to the state. And now that it's all out there, it's still the denials, we, you know, excuses. How are we going to move forward if we don't acknowledge what the truth is? Deal with that problem, and then go on from there. And I just don't see that that's happening. So I guess it's going to go back to the state level. To create a falsified public document is a criminal act. There's a lot more involved in this now. And, you know, I just, I know you commissioners cannot deal with department heads personally, that that's Mr. Leary's responsibility, but that hasn't been happening. And I just, you know, I just don't see any sense in coming down here anymore and trying to talk to you and reason with you on an adult level, when this is the foolishness we get, such as we were handed last Monday night. And I don't know what else to do. So we're going to go back to the state level and see what's going there.
Thank you, Ms. Weeks. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak at public comment? We will be shutting this down and moving to consent agenda. Seeing no other people that want to speak, the public comment section is over. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Are there any items that you'd like to pull for discussion? Starting to my right, Commissioner Lible?
H. N.I.
Okay, sir. Commissioner Goddard?
Well, yes, F and G.
F and G. To my left, Commissioner Pickens?
E.
I'm sorry?
E.
E, item E. Okay. And also, we've got an item D request that needs to happen. So we will be, let's go ahead and...
Can you name one back off, Mr. Chairman?
I will, sir. Item D, E, F, G, H, and I. The Chair will entertain a motion for items A, B, and C.
So moved.
All right, we have a proper motion by Commissioner Lible.
A second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor of A, B, and C, please signify by saying aye.
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 Pose like sign. Item D is sanitation, solid waste engineering and consulting services contracts, RFQ 2000, I mean, 17-02 contract prices, pages 17 through 62 in your packet. Mrs. Sparkman, would you please come forward, please? Thank you.
I was out and about on Saturday, and I ran into the name of this company to get audits. I'm tired of seeing Edmonds &amp; Jones on everything in this county. All these things need to be put out for bid. So that's just one county that could help. That company there, they have six offices in Florida, Gainesville's one of them. We've got to stop giving five-year contracts. We have got to put all these things out for bid, and I don't see it happening. And it's your direction to tell Mr. Leary, this stuff has to be put out for bid. And I don't know who does the bids for this county, but this has got to stop. How do you know five years from now, we're going to be able to pay this bill? These things should be on one-year contracts, where we know maybe we have the money. And I do know, the day that Carl Anderson retired, he said, be very careful. You may have two years left to do your projects you need to do. And that's what we need to look at. Please put these things out on the consent agenda for bid.
Ms. Sparkman, this did go out for bid, but I'm going to have Mr. Gas come up here and explain the process.
But did it go out for bid, more than one company?
It's awarded to three different companies.
Yes. Mr. Gas, would you please come to the podium, and let's explain this process?
And what it's for, please, sir?
Yeah.
This is for continuing contractual services, engineering services.
Gas, will you pull that microphone?
It's for continuing engineering services for contractual requirements that the county has. We actually have a two-part process. The first part, the board has already approved, which is, we did a request for qualifications and advertised it throughout the state. We've had people from Tampa, Orlando, Gainesville, Jacksonville, all over, turned in their qualifications. Those qualifications were then looked at and evaluated on a set schedule. Of that set schedule, we took the three highest-rated qualified companies in the state, and those are the three before you now, to get approval for us to enter into agreements with those companies.
Mr. Gas, along those lines, these are for consulting design or consulting work out at the landfill. And we'll have three contractors to choose from on any given moment, at any given day, at any given project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. The only thing that I was a little concerned about, too, was the five-year period. And my question to you is, is that a standard operating procedure at landfills?
That's generally been standard for us. I think our last one was five years plus two, three years, and I dropped it down to two years. If you look at our current permitting processes going on, I think it was last week or week before last, the final permit was just published. That started in 2012.
Okay.
Because it's a complicated process that had permitting, the mining, the new permitting after the mining was completed, and the construction that will be going on, and it'll be another year before the construction is completed. So it is very easy in a situation which is fluid, as regulations change, we need to make modifications, we need to do changes, that you could have a project that lasts that length of time. Because in solid waste, you've got to be looking very far into the future, because you don't want to wake up one day and say, uh-oh, I don't have any place to put the garbage anymore. You've got to make sure you've got that well out in advance.
Mr. Gas, Commissioner Lible has some questions.
Well, you just said it, but I was hoping you put it more in layman's terms, that the life of a cell where we put our garbage, the mounds, is five years. And typically, the time you open a new one, you start engineering for the next one.
Start planning to get ready for your next one.
You could speak to that, and that's, you know, it all makes sense here. And you did a good job on the three you got here. I congratulate you.
Thank you.
They are good companies.
Commissioner Goddard, you have any questions?
I looked through it. I did notice a big cost difference between the companies. I assume you take that into consideration when you ask for help.
Yes, we take that into consideration.
Mr. Chairman, if I might also point out, there is a termination for convenience clause in these contracts. So to address your five-year concern, they can be terminated by the county, for whatever reason, whether it be for cause, or just because we're just not happy with that service.
Well, that was going to be my next question, if we took a different direction.
Page 24.
Would we be able to get?
Page 19.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible.
The good thing about having the three on board is if you get unsatisfactory service from one, you've now got the alternatives to go to. So that gives you the ability to, you know, move between organizations that are providing the service.
Thank you, Mr. Gas. We appreciate that. If there's no more questions. Commissioner Pickens, you're up for item E.
Yeah, I'd just like if, I believe it would be Bob Stender to just elaborate on this contract and the enhancements for technology, and then actually the savings that it looks like will benefit.
Morning, Commissioners. How are we doing today?
Doing very good.
Morning. This is a replacement of existing services that we have with various companies connecting, interlocking the landfill, Public Works, and we have a line that runs to San Augustine, providing service for the Seventh Circuit video court recording. You'll probably notice Crescent City was left out. We're handling that separately. This service is not available in Crescent City. The little spreadsheet I included shows we had AT&amp;T, we had ITUs, which did the school board work, their price comparisons. We're upping the service to 100 megabits, which is faster than we've ever had in any of these locations. It'll let all our offices connect seamlessly. It'll save us money down the line when we add new equipment, our new phone system and things like that, getting on board. If you'd like to hear about Crescent City, we are working on it. We're working with AT&amp;T. That's a special case, though. We're having to do some build-out there. We're looking for funding to do the build-out to Crescent City. But it isn't our plan to bring that online, too.
Any timeline?
As soon as possible.
Thank you.
Clerk of Court and the Tax Office are in my ear all the time on what we're going to do with Crescent City.
So again, Mr. Chairman, I ask, in layman's terms, what did you do?
We replaced some slower circuits with much faster circuits. And quantity, it was from like 10 megabits to 100 megabits, much, much faster, 10 times faster, for less money.
Savings of $7,300, and up to 100 megabits. Good job.
Thank you.
Senator, you're one of the most positive department heads around.
He is.
For an IT guy, I just really thank you very much. You're, you just always bring hope and excitement to us.
We're always looking forward. If we can't accept the change, then what are we doing here?
I agree. I agree. Thank you. Thank you.
You want me to stay on for F?
Thank you.
Yes, you might as well stay up there for item F, is that correct, Mr. Commissioner Lible?
No, this was Commissioner Goddard.
Oh, Commissioner Goddard, I'm sorry.
Now, I am not the IT guy. I know how to use some of the stuff. So I just needed an explanation, again, layman's terms.
Sure.
In our terms.
Okay.
Okay. We own this equipment, correct?
What, on F?
Yes.
This is Microsoft software. It's really no equipment involved. This is all the word processing, Excel spreadsheets, our server software that runs the backend, email. All this software that makes the county work is what this is about, and the maintenance of it. If you guys turn on your machine, you see you get the Windows updates, that's part of it. These are regular updates for security patches. This agreement allows us to update our servers on a regular basis, keeps us up to date, so we don't get farther, don't get behind. This is something that we've been doing since 2007, I believe, when I looked at it. It's kind of hard to avoid it. I wish we could, but the Microsoft agreement, the world runs on it, we run on it. If there was another option, believe me, I would...
Well, that's, you know, because it is a fair amount of money, $115,000.
Yes, it is.
I'm just kind of relating it back to software that I had bought from my company.
Yep.
And it was expensive to start with, but I didn't have to pay them monthly payments. I just bought my equipment, I paid for the agreements.
This is a enterprise license agreement that allows us 550 email boxes, 500 desktop users. We get the latest software. I don't have to replace the hardware, I can replace the operating system. I get the regular updates. It's normal for us to have something like this, to protect us year to year. Believe me, if I could do something...
I assume it was a normal thing, because, you know, nobody else was getting excited about it. At $2,200 a week, I'm just curious, what are you getting?
We support, like I said, all the desktops in the county that we use. Our server farm is about 20-some servers that support our systems. That includes email, databases, application servers for the Clerk's Office, Tax Office, Property Appraiser's Office. It supports the entire county, except for the Sheriff's Office. They have their own agreement. They're also paying Microsoft.
On top of owning our own equipment, this sounds like just a necessary evil that we must have.
That's a good way to put it, sir. Good way to put it.
Thanks.
Mr. Senator, something that came to mind when you were talking, do we still offer the employees of the county the ability to have Microsoft products on their home computer for a fee?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. If you look on our Intranet site, there's a link on there for employees to take advantage of that.
I tell you, that was a very good advantage for me, because trying to go out and buy those licensing, it's been expensive.
It's a very good deal. We also have a deal with Dell separately, that we can buy their equipment at a lower rate.
Well, good. Well, thank you again for all your information, and appreciate what you're doing for Putnam County. Okay, Commissioner Lible, you are on item G, H, and I, is that correct?
No, I'm on G.
You're on G. That's up again. Okay, Commissioner Goddard?
Okay. Well, my question is, it's obvious we probably went out for bid on this, as due to the audit. I just want to make sure that we have...
Melissa, would you like to come up? Ms. Dillon, our procurement officer. Her and I actually spoke the other day on this item, but if you will come up, and you can enlighten the board.
Good morning.
Good morning.
To answer your question, yes, this did go out for bid. And there were two respondents to that bid. One respondent withdrew their bid, and then the B.O.C.C. awarded the contract to the current vendor. And the contract came with one potential extension, and that's what this item is.
Okay. I would have liked to seen that in here also, just so it's in our paperwork.
The extension?
Well, not just the extension, that it did go out for bid, that it was, you know, the results, how we got to that point, and then the extension. I don't disagree with it. I just, yeah, I don't disagree with it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Flag, would you... Ms. Dillon, excuse me for a second, I'm sorry. Would you come back up? Mr. Flag, would you come up and repeat your question, please, at a microphone?
We have another podium, too.
Okay. Will you turn that on, sir? It's not on.
It's on. Carl Flag, 2400 Madison Street, Palaco. I understand this is an extension of an existing contract, a three-year extension, and I'm not aware of this being sent out, requesting bids.
Okay, I think Ms. Dillon said that it was bid back three years ago.
No, three years ago didn't come up in the contract.
Right.
I want to make sure that's clear. It was not bid it this year. It was bid it three years ago, and this is an extension.
Right. Ms. Dillon, would you re-explain that?
Yes, it was bid three years ago, and at that point in time, the B.O.C.C. awarded the contract with the potential of one extension, and this is the one extension. the contract with the potential of one extension, and this is the one extension.
And my conversation to you the other day was, had any other people showed interest in this? Has anybody else contacted you about providing this service to the county?
No, no one has contacted me.
Thank you. Okay, commissioners, is there any other questions on this item? Now, Commissioner Lible, I apologize, but you have the floor for item...
Mr. Goddard got the show there for a while.
I think he did. Item HNI, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this is just a shout-out to Mr. Leary, being very prudent with this derelict vessel program. He was held tight. The bids were over our calculated amount. I'm not sure what he did behind the scenes, but he saved us $12,636. And I just want to thank you, Mr. Leary, for doing so. Another good job. Thank you. Ms. Wisniewicz and Ms. Dillon were very much involved with that process, and they were responsible for putting the bid back out to the public.
We thank you very much.
Did I comment?
Yes, sir, please, Commissioner Goddard.
I did have a note here. And what you did was great. That was good pricing. Because these are sunken vessels, when they're brought up, will we be able to locate who the owners are? And will they be in any way responsible for a recapture of some of our funds?
I think it's, the FWC has been, will be responsible for all of that. Ms. Wisniewicz might be able to elaborate on that. She worked with the FWC officer in identifying the vessels to be brought up.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman...
Yes, sir.
They're not just sunken, they're abandoned a lot of times and floating. There they are. Just in the way.
Good morning.
Ms. Angie?
That's correct. None of the vessels are submerged.
Yep.
None of them are. So it's, some of them are just merely a matter of just tying onto them and pulling them out, which is what the city of Palatka has done, but two that were originally identified as derelict. But none of them are submerged. There's actually two categories. There's derelict with hazard to navigate, and there's derelict without hazard to navigate. And none of them are the, what they consider an emergency-type removal, which would be hazard to navigate.
But my question was, if we can locate the owners, shouldn't they be responsible for...
The funder, the state has already done that. Not only do they identify them by the coordinates, but they also identify them by the number that's on the vessel. So I would probably assume that they've already contacted the owners, and that's why we're at this particular point.
And another question, our riverfront, is that state property? That is county property?
I do not know, but none of the vessels that are on this grant application are located at the Palatka Riverfront. The city of Palatka has already removed those two.
Okay. Those are the ones that are in my mind.
Yeah.
But I didn't know if the state of Florida had any way to compensate us also for...
I do not know. We are responsible for 25% of the $26,432. So we're out of pocket 25% of that.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, could I... Yes, Commissioner Lible.
Sheriff Deloach is here. Are you familiar...
Ms. Angie, hang on a second.
With the change from the Florida Legislature last July as far as at-risk vessels go? It might help you in what... If not, I can speak to it a little bit.
I can say that I follow that.
All right. But anyhow, we had a new statute, which Angie, I think you know about, that came into play last July with our new set of laws the legislature passed. And it gives our local law enforcement in state sovereign waters the ability to take charge of or capture, whatever you want to call it, an at-risk vessel, especially when they can't locate the owner. And they can bring it up and get it into safety so it's not a hazard of navigation. And that is a great tool because these Fish and Wildlife Funds go so far, and it's a match that comes out of our budget. So this helps. So Sheriff Deloach can bring his boating team out and get one of these boats when citizens turn them in, and we're, you know, we've got this at risk. So we've got a new tool and toolbox, and it'll be a great help. And a lot of people don't know about it because it's only about seven or eight months old now, but it will have relief to these funds, and we can use these monies on more of a challenge boat that is sunk, sitting on the bottom, that sort of thing. When they're floating, which all of these are actually right now, we could call the Sheriff's Department to get them, and we can take them and do as we need to with them. So, there we go.
Ms. Angie, is there any additional funds that we can be capturing from FWC for more and more boats throughout the county?
I'm not sure if I know what you mean. All these vessels are identified through the Florida Wildlife Commission. And once they identify them, and if they're on a public waterway, then they send out a general notification to the public. We have received an additional notification probably two or three weeks ago, but we could not reapply. The directive from the state was to go out to rebid this, not to reapply. So if there is an additional vessel out there, then we would merely have to file another application.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is as we go through this, I'm sure the public is going to contact us that there is a boat somewhere. And do we have the ability then? What's the grant cycle from FWC? Or is it just an open grant, and we can capture four or five and send it up there?
Once they're identified by the Florida Wildlife Commission, if they're on a public waterway, it has to be on a public waterway. It cannot be on a private waterway. We've had calls where somebody wants to remove a vessel, and it was after the hurricane, but we cannot do that. We don't identify them, and we don't actually remove them either. So once that new grant comes out, and there's one that closes the end of April, if it's in our area, then we would apply for it.
Okay. So the FWC goes out and identifies those in...
Oh, yes.
...public navigable waters?
Yes, sir.
Okay. What if our Sheriff's Department, if they saw some, can they contact FWC?
I do not know.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yes, Mr. Wells, Colonel Wells, if you'll come up to the... You were quick jumping up.
Well, I was going to, you know, just to answer your question, our marine unit works closely with the Office of Derelict Vessels through FWC. We do work both on the ones that are navigable waterway issues and also with that same office on those that are emitting pollutants in the water. So we do tag-team with them. There is a process that we go through to notify them, and like Angie said, we continuously apply to have boats deemed derelict. And then several times through the year, they take all of our requests and then award the 75% of the money to remove it. So it's a constantly ongoing process.
Good deal. Well, thank you for that clarification. Okay, commissioners, any other questions on that item? Seeing none, Commissioner Lible, you still have the floor for item I.
Just a question from Mr. Leary on this federal. Department of Emergency Management agreed to cover the federal share of additional costs to this "We Lack a Front Street" project. I guess my question was, was Hurricane Matthew the reason that we're seeing this in front of us today? No, this was prior to Hurricane Matthew. This is a lingering project from previous storms that hopefully will, hopefully this will be the final time you'll see anything relative to this particular project. It's been around a long time. Yeah, it has, yeah.
Well, you may see a budget amendment now.
Okay. Well, my question along with you, Commissioner Lible, is this it? Please, I mean, we seem to be dealing with this almost every meeting. But Mr. Tompkins, I'll give you the floor for a moment. Why don't you come up? You and I have had lengthy discussions about this item, and I believe you're trying to put this to bed once and for all. So you have the floor, sir.
I have good news. As of Sunday, the project is completed. We will no longer see "We Lack a Front Street." Everything was done. The state came up with additional funds to cover the additional work needed. This was from Mr. Leary, I read the 2004, 2005 storms is how long it's been around. So this finishes it up. We sent substantial completion notice to the state Sunday afternoon, so we have met all our contractual obligations, and work is completed.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible.
Congratulations. I was embarrassed to say it was Tropical Storm Fay, I believe, that started this.
I think you're right.
That was a long time ago.
Yes, sir.
Government moves slow some days.
But we got it done.
But I think you re-engineered that, didn't you?
Yes, we did. We re-engineered it. We saved a bunch of money, a bunch of time on it. State was in full concurrence with what we did, and that's why they had additional monies for us. Honestly, they had to get it off of their books.
Yeah, and we need to get it off our book.
Yes, sir.
We're looking forward to that last of them. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Okay, commissioners, are there other comments on these items? The chair will entertain a motion for item D, E, F, G, H, and I.
I move. I make the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Goddard moves approval on items D, E, F, G, H, and I.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Pickens has a proper second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Mr. Jones, we have you up next for... Oh, you're not Mr. Jones, you're Shirley Griffin.
Shirley Griffin.
Vice Chair of our Better Place Committee. Please, Ms. Griffin, come up and give your annual report.
I'm pretty short. I'm going to move this down a little bit.
That's okay.
My name is Shirley Griffin. I am giving this report for Mr. Jones, who unfortunately could not be here today. And in case you need to know, I live in Pomona Park. If you have any questions afterwards, you will have to get back with Mr. Jones because I did not write this report, so I'm not actually responsible for it, and he will know what he wrote here. So we will start with Mr. Jones' report begins. And it will go, I will go through the written report and briefly discuss what I consider to be important or perhaps less clear points. And then I'm going to talk about something I want to talk to that's dear to my heart in Pomona Park. But that's my thoughts. Referring to the written report, the first paragraph on page one describes the purpose of the Better Place Plan, which essentially is to improve the county's infrastructure. The second paragraph describes the responsibility of the Oversight Committee, which include presenting this report, this annual report, and reviewing projects to ensure they meet the requirements of the ordinance. We have conducted such a review, and in our opinion, the fiscal year 2016 surtax funds have been spent appropriately. It is important to note that this report covers only 83% of the impact of the Better Place Plan on the county. 17% of the surtax collected goes directly to the five municipalities, and their expenditures and infrastructure improvements are not included here. On page two, Table 1, shows the plan's fiscal year 16 activity. It started the year with a carryover from fiscal year 15 of 9.3 million. It collected 5.4 million in surtax revenue during the year and received $29,000 in interest. This gave a total for the year of 14.7 million in revenue, of which 6.8 million was spent, leaving 7.8 million to be carried over to the fiscal year of 17. The committee's belief is that the plan's purpose, expressed in the first paragraph on page one, is more likely to be accomplished by putting infrastructure on the ground than putting money in the bank. The projects shown in Table 1 include all projects undertaken during fiscal year 16 with surtax funds. The status "ongoing" means that the project is not completed and additional charges are expected. The status "reoccurring" means it is a regular annual payment that is likely to reoccur in the future. The debt service of $1,586,84 will terminate on December 31st this year, making that amount available in future years for new infrastructure. The other two reoccurring projects do not have end dates at this time. Table 2 shows the history of surtax collections. The low point was fiscal year 11, when we were experiencing some of the worst impacts of the recession. The high point is the past year, 2016. And this indicator, of course, does not tell the whole story of the county's economic recovery, but it definitely is a good sign. Table 3 shows all county projects completed since the plan began in 2003. Paving and resurfing are shown as aggravated align atoms near the bottom. They both should be shown as ongoing projects instead of reoccurring projects. The connection between the tables can be seen by taking table revenue, total revenue of $78,541,782 at the bottom of Table 2, subtracting it from total expenditures of $70,714,354 at the bottom of Table 3, which equals a carryover for fiscal year 2017 of $7,827,428 at the bottom of Table 1. This is the end of Mr. Jones' report. Now I would like to turn my attention to something closer to my heart, Pomona Park.
Ms. Griffin, do you mind, before we go there, commissioners, is there any questions concerning...
If I could, Mr. Chairman...
There, Mr. Lible.
In Table 2, I just want to point out particularly to the new commissioners that if you go to 2008, you see that drop from 5.247 million to 4,758. And that drop continues and stays in the 4 million category all the way to 14. But if you pick up on 1516, it clearly shows and demonstrates that we're coming out of the recession.
Right.
This was a really good table.
Yeah, this is all sales tax, so that's good. Ms. Griffin, one thing I do want to mention on the paragraphs on page one, putting infrastructure on the ground is better than putting money in the bank. This commissioner agrees with that. I'd really like to see our Better Place Plan funds out there, working for the public. And I agree with that statement. So thank you very much...
You're welcome.
...for pointing that out. And also, the debt service is that bond issue that was floated a long time ago by previous commissioners to really inject paving on dirt roads very quickly, and this will be the last of that payment. So thank you for that, too, for that report, and we appreciate that.
I will say this is Mr. Jones' report. He was unable to make it today, so he asked me to do the report. So I've only had this short time to look it over, and I've been through this before. But I'm just saying, I did not write this, so I really couldn't answer any questions to amount to much. But if you have any questions, he is available, I'm sure, if you want to reach him at home and see if he might be able to answer them, since he wrote the report.
Well, I think you did an outstanding job.
Well, you're quite welcome. Thank you.
Now, closer to home.
Okay, closer to home, Pomona Park. I just, I left you a sheet, a packet up there that says Town and Pomona Park Better Plans, Place Plan Funds. It shows from inception what we made, what we were given, what we have spent. And in between those front and back pages, you will see that it shows every money that has been spent in our town and where it has gone. So it's a good report, and our mayor was kind enough to put this together for me and John Berquist. And as you can see, we have spent a lot of our money. Our current totals are 800, and, well, we made, we have made 800 through this Better Place Plan, 813,785.13. And we have spent 653 and some change, a thousand, and we have a current balance of 160-something thousand. So we have really been working hard in Pomona. We cleaned it up. We have made it nice. And I know most of you have been there. If anyone in the audience has not, I would love for them to come. We have a first Saturday of breakfast, first Saturday of every month, which will be this Saturday, and it's from 8 till 11. It's a wonderful time to get to know us, and we're pretty good people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Griffin?
I just have a comment. Ms. Shirley, I just want to thank you for serving on the Oversight Committee and also the Neighborhood Watch in Pomona Park, and just commend your group and John Berquist and Town Council for what you're all doing in Pomona Park.
Thank you.
It really shows that you're very proud of Pomona, and I thank you.
Thank you. I would like to tell you that we also have a Neighborhood Watch, which is, I'm gonna say, if nobody's here to rebuttal it, and if they do rebuttal it, I won't listen. I think we have the longest-running, continuous, whatever you want to say, monthly meeting of Neighborhood Watch, and our meetings have been being sixty persons a month. It's the second Thursday of every month, and you're welcome to come and join us for that. We have wonderful speakers and really keep the town informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, we should give a shout-out to Mr. Jones, too. Ron has served in this position a very long time. I'm sorry he couldn't be here with us today, but as Ms. Shirley was touting many, many, many millions of dollars, that wouldn't have happened without this Better Place Plan.
I agree.
And it has taken us far and will continue to do so, and thank you for serving, as Mr. Commissioner Pickens said. I agree, and Mr. Ron Jones, we need to.
I agree.
Give him thanks.
Thank you. Okay, I do want to recognize Representative Bobby Payne has joined us in the audience. Thank you, Representative Payne, for being here today. If it's no objection, we're gonna recess the meeting for four minutes. Okay, seeing none. Today, February twenty-eighth, we have a ten o'clock certain. It is ten sixteen. Mr. Hammond, you have the floor, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Quiet, please, quiet.
What you have before you this morning is a proposed ordinance to continue the moratorium on impact fees that we have had now in place since early two thousand and ten. Currently, the studies that were done are to back up those impact fees are over a decade old, and pretty much you would have to re-study each individual fee to justify it again today. So, before you could really reinstitute those impact fees, again, you'll have to do a study to justify them. So, again, even if you wanted to, you really can't reinstitute them at this time. So, again, we are certainly proposing a moratorium for another year, and this ordinance will do that.
Mr. Hammond, I have a question to kind of start it off. Should we go ahead and just extend it out? If we have to do a study, it's gonna take a while, implementation, if we ever decided it, let's send a message to our developers that we want to look long-range here and not just one year at a time. What's your feelings about that?
That is your discretion. Again, from staff's standpoint, an impact fee has nothing to do with the, whether you have development here or not. But from your standpoint, we've had now a moratorium going back seven years, and at this point, you can't reinstitute it. I would say every extension has been a one-year extension, except one. The board did a two-year extension a few years ago. That's strictly at your discretion as to what the board, how long the board wants to extend that.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Well, I kind of, I like the one, the one year. It keeps bringing it up, so that we can keep looking at it myself, but.
Chairman?
Mr. Hammond, if you could discuss the pitfalls of extending it out, if we were to be faced with, say, a massive development, what does it do to the Planning and Development Department?
It does nothing to us. It's not money that we benefit, that we get directly. It is money that goes into the general fund for, that is earmarked for the impact fee that it applies to, like transportation, or water and sewer, or those sorts of things.
Schools.
Schools.
That sort of thing.
It's just a funding issue. You only have X amount of sources of income.
Well, let me be more direct. Does it cut us out of the funding? Can a big firm outmaneuver us in your department by extorting or, you know, expanding upon this timeline?
Again, I don't see it that way. Again, it's just, it's a funding mechanism. It's one of many cards that you have to play, and you have basically eliminated that card from the deck at this point. And it certainly, St. John's has never placed a moratorium on their impact fees. Certainly, it has not slowed their development whatsoever.
All right, if you can hold that thought a minute. Mr. Chairman, can I go to Mr. Manning?
You may, sir.
What's the legal ramifications to implement an impact fee in a fast, timely manner to avoid some of these additional costs on our infrastructure particularly, or school construction, or whatever it might be? I was, I remember oh-eight very well, you know, when we were staring, Mariposa was coming, three thousand homes, most of you weren't here, and.
Well, the good thing is that the, the impact fees have already been established.
But we're saying today, they're ten years old and obsolete.
Well, the impact fee ordinances have been established and are in place. What this is, is a moratorium on collecting those impact fees. So, from a legal perspective, there's less procedurally that would have to be done to put them in place initially, because that's been done. However, the statutes do require that they be based upon current data, so there would have to be studies performed. Now, it would just be a matter of how long it would take, and how much money it would cost to have those studies completed before you could, before you could start collecting on those impact fees. So, the, whether it's extended a year or five years, again, as Mr. Hammond stated, that really is up to the board and what message, you know, you feel that sends to the developers. But once the studies are completed and in hand, if it were a longer period of time, two years, five years, or whatnot, the moratorium could be rescinded early, and that, that would just be the matter of advertising it and having a public hearing like you're doing today.
Okay. Ms. Lible, you get, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we do have a blue card that was just handed to me on item seven A. Mr. Tim Hotteling, please, sir.
Sorry, Tim Hotteling, again, one oh-five Riverside Way, San Mateo. Just a point of observation on impact fees. Purpose of the impact fees is to eliminate the economic impact of developers coming in, which means eliminate the need to build a voluntary fire station out on Highway two oh seven to cover some developers, so that the developer can build and sell, which is good, but it's, covers the impact of freeway onramps, impact of access to roads, impact of additional schools that are necessary. And lacking an impact fee, I and you get to pay more to provide those services, that the developers reap the benefit, and there is a balance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tim Hotteling. Okay. Commissioners, the chair will entertain a motion.
Wait, you got a public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any other people that would like to speak in favor? Okay, in favor or opposed?
Opposed.
Hang on just a minute. Anybody would like to speak in favor? Okay, Mr. Rawls, come up and speak in opposition.
Clear for myself, I'm opposed to impact fees right now. One thing that's not been discussed is the element of workforce housing. So, if you want to bring some revenue in Putnam County, you're really gonna have to figure a way to get some workforce housing built, so you can attract a workforce that can afford to pay for mortgages and spend their money here. At the time the impact fees hit last time, to build in the city, you had to spend for a house that we built that was seventeen hundred square feet on the roof, the impact fees and permit fees totaled over thirteen thousand dollars. Almost eight thousand, if from memory, was the county and school board fees. So, if you take a hundred thousand dollar house and you strap it with another twelve to thirteen thousand dollars in impact fees, you've just pushed the cost of that house up ten percent. So, the person either spends ten percent less on a monthly basis on their, on their free spending money, or they pay the impact fees upfront. But either way, it really makes it difficult to attract workforce housing. You have a chicken and egg conversation. My advice to this commission would be to rescind the, or to leave the moratorium in place, and panel a task force to negotiate with developers, get developer agreements, because no one that I'm looking at right here has any experience in development, but I do, and I've spoken with developers, and I've worked with a developer that's done over a billion dollars worth of development. And recently, he told me that Putnam County would not be attractive whatsoever if impact fees were in play. So, there are ways to work around it through developer agreements. To Tim's point, yes, you can get a fire station out of a developer, but you may have to float a bond issue to get the fire station built that's paid for from revenue that's derived from the sale of lots. St. John's County rescinded their CDD fees for ten years. The only reason they have the boom going on that they have right now is when the CDD fees were called back in in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. The builders told the banks, either give us the money to build, or we're gonna have to get the land back to you, and the county was gonna get nothing. So, everybody got together, held hands, and saying kumbaya, and they made it work. Right now, the average sale price on a house in St. John's County, the median sale price is three hundred and ten thousand dollars, and they have a sixty-one thousand dollar median income. We're not there. My advice would be just to leave the impact fees alone right now, leave them where they are, and instead of going for a huge, large development, start talking to some of your local developers that might be interested in putting a couple hundred homes on the table. We have thirty thousand homes, plus or minus three hundred homes, it would be a ten percent increase, that's a huge spike in your, in your growth curve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Anybody else from the public would like to speak?
Brock Sloan, twenty-six oh-one Fairway Drive. Impact fees, St. John's County and Putnam County are not comparable. St. John's County is one of the fastest-growing counties in the country, has been for more than a decade. They can't stop the growth. Impact fees are their leverage, to use a card term, to stand both feet on the brake. Putnam County wants growth, then impact fees are probably not the best solution, although I understand that revenue and expansion and fire stations and all the things that we want as citizens are important. If we want growth, that is probably not the best way to get it. If we want to slow growth or impede growth, then impact fees is the correct decision. Speaking from personal experience, impact fees on residents or commercial properties is an inhibitor, and I say that from paying it both here in Putnam County and St. John's County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sloan, we appreciate that. Anybody else would like to speak about impact fees? All right, seeing none, Commissioners, the, open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we keep the moratorium.
As presented, or?
As presented.
Okay.
For one year.
We have a proper motion by Commissioner Goddard to.
Second.
Moratorium for one year, proper second by Commissioner Lible. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Okay, Commissioners, appointments, is there any appointments as we go through fishing funds, library board, planning commission?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question on, it looks like we still need three, you know, spots for the planning commission. In District One, we have two people from District One already on that board. Is it reasonable customary to have, you know, more than two, since it's about a nine-member board? We have five districts, you know, try to spread that out where there's, you know, two per district, or does it really matter?
I don't believe it matters at the at-large positions, so, but yes, we do want a representation of the county as a whole, but if you have someone willing to serve at an at-large position, something you can bring up.
Okay, I will look into that.
Okay. Waterways and trails, we have.
All these districts have been applied for, I don't have a list of them, though.
Okay, all right. We can do that at the next meeting possibly?
Yep.
Okay. I did try to contact Craig McLean this morning, because he had mentioned there was such a list, but I didn't get in touch with him.
We had a, really, a lot of folks wanting to serve on this committee, and that's a good thing. We have, we filled all our voting chairs and also our non-voting, so we're in good shape there.
Thank you, Commissioner Lible.
Zoning Board of Adjustments, I have Mary Ratliff at-large, willing to serve there.
Taking over whose spot there?
Brian Watts.
Mary Ratliff?
Yep. She has experience, she's served in that position before, Commissioners.
Okay, all right, and we'll take them all as a whole. Committees with juvenile justice, do we have anybody that wants to serve on that? Okay, all right. Commissioners, we have Commissioner Lible's recommendation for Mary Ratliff. Do I hear a motion?
Before we go into the motion, a little more discussion. I see Carl Flag's name there, is that, is he already assigned to that? Mr. Flag, you're here. Are you, you on the Juvenile Justice Circuit Advisory Board, or applying? That's my question.
I think he's already on it.
You're done.
Yeah, I think that's a commission, that's a Commissioner, yeah. So, we'll have to replace that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll entertain a motion?
Move approval.
Okay, move approval for Mary Ratliff to serve at-large on the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Do we have a proper second?
A second.
Have a proper second by Commissioner Pickens. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, oppose, like sign. The ayes have it. County Administrator, Mr. Rick Leary.
I have nothing to add, sir.
Okay. County Attorney, Mr. Stacy Manning.
Nothing further.
Clerk of the Court, Mr. Tim Smith, Kenny Downs.
No, sir, we're fine.
Thank you. This is our chance for Commissioner comments. Gentlemen, I did ask that we put three things on the agenda to see if we want to send these back to a workshop, or we want to talk about it here, and it's fine with me, however we go. And we'll take the first item. We do have a comment card on item twelve A, discussion and creation of a financial advisory task force. So, let's get public input. Mr. Rawls, would you, I think you're on, that's your agenda item. And while Mr. Rawls is coming, these items came out of the Audit Committee meeting the other night, and I just wanted to try to keep the balls in the air to see if there was any interest on the board of moving forward and how we would move forward at these items.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started there, though, I have to bring up the point that this usually, these type of positions that are being discussed typically come from staff, and I am a little concerned that they're not coming from staff at this point. I just want to bring that out today.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Mr. Rawls?
Right. I'm not even sure if it would be appropriate for the staff to be involved in a task force at this time. Mr. Griffin spoke the other night eloquently, to say the least, and if you multiply out the numbers that he threw at you exponentially, you got a hundred and ten findings on average for the purchase orders reviewed by the audit. So, it, I think it would be extremely prudent for this commission to assign a task force, a citizens advisory task force, like you did with the landfill. There was a lot of details that came out of that that would have never fleshed out had that task force not been impaneled. I think it's, it's not only for the benefit of the commission to be able to let them do some of the heavy lifting, but also for staff, because there's a lot of, the staff still has a job to do, eight to five, and they don't have time to go through and get in the weeds in some of this stuff. It's obvious, just hearing this morning, what I've heard from people, I agree with it, it's time to put this stuff to bed, but the only way you're really gonna do it is to take what appears to be in the dark and bring it out into the light, and if you have an independent citizens advisory task force, nobody's gonna be able to fault anybody with any kind of conclusion they come up with, good, bad, or indifferent. So, I would encourage this commission to impanel a citizens advisory task force with the task to review all of the auditor's findings.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Goddard, Commissioner Goddard?
I think Mr. Stacy needs to, if I'm correct, you're wanting to, on the audit that we have right now, which means, if I'm not mistaken, we have a deadline of March thirteenth that we have to answer to, correct?
I think the, the response to the state could also include that a citizens advisory task force is being impaneled to review this, and that further response will be coming. There were several things that Mr. Leary said that we didn't take exception to. Obviously, that's a short, one-sentence answer. We'll make, we'll make, we'll make changes, but, and not just this audit, but it sounds to me like the county commission needs to have citizens' input on a regular basis, just like the state attorney has a grand jury that they can go to. You guys need to have an advisory task force that you can go to and say, "Look, we're looking at this, this, this one item here, and it's a little bit too heavy for us, we got a short time limit, can you guys dig in the weeds for us and come back and give us a recommendation?" Or make a recommendation to staff, let the staff make a recommendation. It's done, I serve on the advisory task, or the advisory committee for the Small Business Development Center at University of North Florida. They don't operate independently, they're not all-knowing. There's a bunch of smart people up there, but you have input from Jacksonville, St. John's, or Jacksonville-St. John's, Clay County Chambers of Commerce have representatives, they have small business representatives, you have Small Business Development Center members that are on there. It's a fifteen to twenty-person panel, depending on how many people show up, and they toss around ideas. I was a member of a CEO exchange up in Jacksonville. We met monthly at the University Club on the St. John's River to discuss issues that impact small businesses. I've never heard of. I've never heard of anything like this in Putnam County. I have to go out of county to participate in this kind of stuff, because we don't have it here. What we have is this board that sits on high and makes decisions with recommendations from staff, but we have an auditor that comes in independently and says, look, your staff has made some mistakes here, so it might be time for somebody that's outside looking in to take an independent look at it, not just for what we have now, but also going forward. You know, you are destined to repeat the same failures if you don't change the way you work.
Yeah, we don't want to do this again.
Right.
When is our deadline? Can we get an extension? I mean, if we were to implement this, would that open a door for an extension?
I can't answer that. The time to respond is statutorily set, so my gut response is that, no, we probably can't get an extension to respond, we have to respond within the timeframe.
I'm not saying as for extension, I'm saying the response is, the county has impaneled a task force that will do further review into this, and will have further commentary on it later. It may all be one-sentence responses. Or it could be, we've taken further opportunity to look into this, and this is what we flushed out as well.
If, if we were to do this and you were to take it on, could you have most of this information gathered before our deadline so that they can be put together and presented?
Absolutely. But I would also preface that with, is so long as the staff had the information available that's being looked at, if there's, you know, reading the findings, it sounded like there was impediments to some of the questions that were being asked by the state. So again, I don't know why it wouldn't be prudent for the county to respond to the state by saying, we're gonna take a little more time to look at this. There are no legal actions that the state can take at this time that are gonna impact this county. They can't come in here and say, based on our findings, this is what we're gonna do. All they're saying is, we want, before we make a conclusion, they want the county's input. You have their input, now they want the county's input. I read the city's input. It's about as inert as you can get. I don't think our input should be anything close to what the city did. I think theirs sounds very, I'm gonna use the word ignorant for the, I don't want to insult ignorant people, but I think at this point, prudence should prevail, and I think your county attorney would agree that if you did respond to the state in such a way that the county has taken a proactive step to impanel a citizens advisory task force and give the task force a three-week timeline to say, hey, we need a response back in three weeks of what we're looking at.
Mr. Manning? If, if we, if we did put this together and we answered, let's say, 80% of all the questions, we have some questions on the other 20%, and we sent that information, would that be acceptable?
Well, the, basically, well, for one thing, I'm not even sure what's being proposed as far as the specific duties or authority of the financial advisory task force. That's number one. Number two, the clerk's office is, is statutory or actually constitutionally directed with the responsibility for financial oversight of the county. And they do that. So if there was some sort of financial advisory task force, I think it would more appropriately be under the clerk's office. Third, as far as responding to the auditor's report, or preliminary report, I think what we have to keep in mind here is that this has been an ongoing process that started, you know, a year and a half ago. And that process, over that year and a half, consisted of input from, from citizens to the auditor's office. So they've provided all of their input to the auditor, the auditor took that information, and they did their investigation. And so now, it's the county's time to respond with information from within the county. It's not a time for, to ask citizens to respond on behalf of the county, that's just not an appropriate way for it to be done.
I think, Mr. Manning, misunderstood me. I'm asking for you guys to impanel a task force to write the response. I just simply think that Mr. Manning, Mr. Leary, don't have the ability to write the response on behalf of the citizens until the citizens have taken a look at everything that the auditors came back with and are able to make a presentation to the commission so the commission can respond on its own. At the end of the day, prudence has to prevail here, and this commission is tasked with the responsibility of responding to that, not Mr. Manning, not Mr. Leary, and not Mr. Smith. It's gotta come from this group that I'm standing in front of, immediately in front of me. So I think the prudent man law really should apply here. You can mix words, you can call it a financial advisory task force, you can call it a citizens advisory task force, you can call it whatever you want. At the end of the day, I think you guys did a terrific job with the landfill task force. They were able to get in, look at a lot of useful information, and take our landfill in a completely different direction than it was heading in.
I agree with you on that, but there was a long-term span.
I don't, I don't, you know, I think, and don't take this the wrong way, Mr. Manning, but I think your counsel to them to respond by a certain date, if I was this commission, I would be calling the auditor general's office and asking them, look, what happens if we go ahead and impanel a task force to do some review and make recommendations? I don't think they're gonna come back and say, you know what, that's impractical, how dare y'all want to go back to the citizens that pay your payroll, that paid for that $955,000, the artwork, and $14,300 of the framework? I mean, come on, really?
Well, I understand where you're coming from, sometimes common sense doesn't run with law.
Sometimes citizens know a little bit more than they might appear to know.
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotell, do you have a comment you'd like to make based on?
Just a quick one. Tim Hotell, 105 River Sideways, San Mateo. I would assume, in your wisdom, if this panel was set up, it wouldn't include, or having transparency, people could look in, but the big mouse, like myself, would not be part of that committee, because you have a tremendous wealth of knowledge, skills, and ability out there with people that know all, the majority of this stuff is contracting and management of government. You have people that know very little about what's gone on, that in my estimation, would be happy to come forth and provide another independent, neutral review to see who's stretching the truth and who's not. And I would encourage you to put that part into your cap there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hotell. Is there anybody else in the audience would like to speak about item 12A?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Joe Pickens, 125 Woodbury Trail, Satsuma. My thought on this is that what the response to the audit is supposed to be about is to respond to the specific findings that were in the audit, whether you disagree with them or not, and whether you have done anything to mitigate or change, you know, that if you agree with it. My suggestion is if you want to mention the forming of this task force or anything else that the county and this commission might do going forward to address issues that are brought, that were brought up in the audit, then you should mention in the audit. Response that we're considering forming this task force, we are considering item B on your list, Mr. Commissioner, item, we're considering item three. However, each of these items are important, and they deserve and should have the deliberation and the public input that, you know, that is consistent with the magnitude of the decisions that you'll be making. And so I don't think you have a 14-day deadline to implement something or not, when you can, as part of the response, say, these are the things, in addition to the responses, the concrete things that we are doing now, these are the things we're considering doing going forward. And that way, all of these ideas can be vetted, you know, in a timely manner, in a deliberate manner, and in the manner that they deserve. And by the way, thank you very much for your time yesterday, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it greatly.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Okay, commissioners? I really like President Pickens's comments there, and I like the fact that possibly we could tie this up and say, these are things that we're looking at in our audit response. Would that be, if we discussed them today, we can actually say we did discuss them, and we are looking into the future? Could we not?
Certainly. And, you know, on all three of these issues, I think that, you know, as Mr. Pickens indicated, I think he's very wise on this, I think these, all three of these issues that really do need to be fully vetted by this board as far as, you know, again, where, which offices would be appropriate for each one. And I say that because I think an inspector general is also more appropriate under the clerk's office. But I think, you know, this board does need to look at what the responsibilities of those positions or groups would be, what their authority would be, how they would be funded, and what they could spend money on. And, I mean, there's a myriad of issues that I think would need to be flushed out, and it might be appropriate, more appropriate, I think, to do so, maybe starting in a workshop or multiple workshops to kind of go over those issues, but it certainly would be, I think, appropriate to state in the responses that, you know, these three things are being considered, they have been brought up, and they, and this board intends to look into those in the future to see if it would be appropriate to implement.
Commissioner Lible brought up a good point about coming from the staff, so we could actually, we could talk about B and C real quick, and then we could charge staff to basically put some items together, bring it to a workshop, as staff would see us like to do, and your advice with attorney, and go from there. Is that, is that a pretty good idea?
Yeah, and it would probably be a good idea for you to provide kind of what you're thinking for these, so that gives some guidance as to what specifically you're wanting from them.
Well, okay, all right. Let's, commissioners, are there any comments on 12?
I have to discuss what makes me nervous, when I see the wording directly under the BOCC. Does that rule out our HR department? I mean, has it put us at additional liability? I got a bunch of questions. So I like, you know, let's go back and discuss this further. I mean, that's strong. It's a very, you know, when somebody's working directly under you, what does that exactly mean?
Well, I think the finding, which number 10, if I'm not mistaken, because they did change some during our process, they did, the state said that we should have an almbuzman that reported directly to the Board of County Commissioners, okay? And that was something in their finding that their recommendation was. Am I correct in saying that, Mr. Manning?
I don't have the exact wording, but it was part of the recommendation. They did mention an almbuzman position. I don't recall, they may have said, I don't know if it was, there we go.
There you go.
The recommendation, recommend the BCC document, consideration of various mechanisms to better promote open communication between the BCC and general public. One such mechanism could be the establishment of an independent almbuzman's position that reports directly to the BCC and assists in providing timely, consistent, and impartial responses to citizens' concerns.
Okay.
I want to know more, again.
I hear you.
You know? This is all new.
Well, I was saying, you know, that like Mr. Lible was saying, it needs to be written out, you know, what you can, can't do, and who you're answering to. And obviously, it couldn't be a paid position, so you're asking somebody probably to take a position that's not paid, that would be a citizen. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Pickens, Commissioner Pickens?
I have a comment, yeah. As a commissioner, with the information presented, I definitely could not make an informed decision today on this. I do believe that, you know, if we're gonna move forward with these three items, that they definitely deserve to have their own workshop where, and that things could be laid out as like on the task force, how many would be on that task force and their exact responsibilities. And also the inspector general, you know, how much would he be paid, and who does he answer to, and who answers to him? And also the almbuzman. So I do believe going forward that I would say, if we're gonna look at these, they deserve their independent workshop where we could work it out.
I agree. Thank you, Commissioner.
So with that being said, I would like to make a motion that we move this to a workshop.
Okay.
Unless there's any more comment from the public? Anybody want to come up and add? I'm all ears.
Commissioner Lible? Commissioner Pickens, if I, let me ask this, you said that they deserve their own workshop. Would you like to do them as all together, or workshop item A, workshop?
I think they need to do them individual.
Okay. Commissioner Lible, how do you feel about that?
I think so. I agree with Commissioner Pickens.
Okay, and, okay, so you want to make a motion, sir?
Okay.
Is that what you?
Yeah, well, I did, but let's modify it to add the wording that we'll take each of these requests individually, because of the nature of, you know, legal ramifications and other things that we haven't discussed yet.
Okay, Commissioner Lible's motion is to take item A, B, and C individually at a workshop and discuss them. Do we, that's a proper motion? Do we have a proper second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a proper second by Commissioner Goddard. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, like sign. Carry. Thank you. Starting to my far right, Commissioner Lible, is commissioner comments time?
Yes, I'd like to comment on the high school state bass tournament that was held in Blacka, Florida last weekend. It was really, really, they had 150 high school students competing on our riverfront, in our river, I should say, and it was quite spectacular. And amongst the Fisher people, I'll say, there were quite a few females, and it was really nice. They all had sponsorships and jerseys, it didn't look much different than a high school basketball team, and it was really fun. And the other thing is, I would like to wish everybody a happy Montegraw, livant et roulet, and that's it.
Thank you.
Today is Fat Tuesday.
All right. Commissioner Goddard, to my right?
Now, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I did want to make a comment to Ed, and I've been hearing the same thing, a lot of people are wanting to move to Putnam County. We have a lot to offer. I've heard it from the surrounding communities that they see a big change in Putnam County in its appearance and our, you know, being able to go shopping, restaurants and such as that. I think the biggest thing is turning the citizens to understand, we do have a great county, we have great people here, our education system isn't the bottom, it is very well. I'm very proud of our community.
Thank you, Commissioner Goddard. Commissioner Pickens?
Also, thank you, Ed, for your comments. I'm definitely, as one as a commissioner, during a campaign trail, got tired of hearing, you know, the negatives of Putnam County. I think we just have so many positives, and look forward to working with this commission. And also, thank Ms. Shirley Griffin for presenting the Better Place Plan report. You can see just the positive things that those monies are bringing to Putnam County with the resurfacing of roads, and also what each municipality is doing, like Pomona Park, to upgrade their community center and the other things that they're doing. So just really positive.
Good deal. Okay, commissioners, we have a meeting back here at 2:00 in the conference room for transportation. Seeing no business before us, this meeting will adjourn. Thank you.